On the seventeenth of December, and she attended our Christmas party and was able to stay there most of the evening, which is a good sign because before, you know, she'd be somewhere an hour or two and she'd sometimes she'd have to leave, so, you know. I'm worried all the time, but right now she's good.
Tell her we send our best.
Okay.
So, do you want me to?
Go for it.
Dive in. Um, so Gina, you know, and Chris, I expect, um, back at, I don't know, maybe a year ago, we, we had a meeting on Trident, and, um, and I think we decided we were going to get quarterly reports. Have we been getting those? Cause I, so they're in our packet with, when we get the police report, it's just an addendum there quarterly.
Yes.
On the quarterly reports, there's a Trident attachment to that.
A detachment?
Yeah.
Okay.
In the board pack.
Okay.
No, not in the weeklys, the quarterly, um, department head reports that you get every quarter.
Okay.
Attached to that.
That's a nice addition, my bad.
Trident breakdown, yeah. So, we've been getting that, you, for the last, what, probably a year and a half, I think we started that?
And if you want us to read the young one for you in prison, we can give them to you.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure we were still doing that, cause I know that was one of the things that come out of the last time we met was that, make sure that, you know, to change up that. And then the other thing is, and, is that we discussed, and, and I want to ask my fellow board members this, this to see, but, when, when you read the Trident statistics on drug seized, do you, does everybody know what a gram is and how many grams are in a ounce? Dan, Ben, or you do? You know how many grams are in an ounce?
I usually don't translate from metric to standard.
I don't.
And how many grams are in a kilo?
So, there's twenty, yeah, well, so the twenty-eight grams in an ounce.
Okay.
And sixteen ounces, obviously, in a pound. So, so my, my take on all this, and we talked about this last time, so I'm not being unfair here, but, but what we also talked about was, you know, it was making the dollar amount realistic, so it didn't seem to be, to me, misleading the public. I mean, I, I'm, that's, I'm, I'm not trying to be too strong of a statement or anything there, but if, if you, if, if, and I'm looking at the 2016 stats, so just looking at that, so you've got fifteen, you know, fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-six grams of marijuana, well, that sounds like an awful lot of marijuana, but it's, it's a hundred and twenty-seven pounds. When you, when you, and so I think it's ma, it's more meaningful when you give statistics to, to not, I, I think that's misleading, stated, it's fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-six grams, cause that's not the way you're hopefully seizing, and hopefully you're not seizing it by the gram, because, you know, that's like ten bucks, right, or something, maybe five, I don't know what it is. But, but, so, so what happens when you do this? So, you've got this value, if it's a hundred and twenty-seven pounds, twenty-seven pounds, and it's valued at two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, um, the, the open market right now for, uh, primo flower pot is about twelve hundred a pound. It's a soft, it's a, it's a commodity, right? And so, in, and, and so, in, in Colorado, a year ago, it was two thousand a pound, but now, the, my client sells prime flower, strains of flower for twelve hundred dollars a pound, that's the most they can get for it. So, I, I think, you know, I think we need to be truthful and realistic with people when we're reporting the, the value of these things. So, if you valued it at, I think at twelve fifty, the two seven, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, it is, you know, it's probably overstated, in my opinion, by, by a half. And so, so, I mean, by two. So, and, and I think, you know, the same thing with, if you look at the heroin eighty-five point eight grams, well, that's three ounces. You know, three ounces of, of heroin, you can probably, I don't know this, but I would imagine you can get an ounce of heroin for fifteen hundred bucks. I mean, I don't know for sure that, but, so when you value it at, at a gram per gram price, which is seventy or eighty bucks, it gets to be twelve thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And I, and I don't, I don't like that. I don't like it presented like this. And I know we talked about it a time before, about presenting this in a manner that made more sense to a more educated public about what we're getting. And this all goes back to the bang for the buck we're getting for our almost ten hundred thousand dollar investment in Trident every month. So, I am not, I'm not doing, I'm not doing this because I've got a axe to ground with, with Trident or with either one of y'all, of course. But, but, but I, I also wanted my board, cause I, I'll be gone in a year and a half, I'm a year and four months off this board, and I know we've had these discussions over the years, and I want to make sure that, that, that there's an educational, you know, process of, 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 you know, that's realistic. And, and, and I guess, you know, and, you know, Gina and I, you know, you and I have discussed this, but I, I feel like, um, you know, the, the war on drugs, which started back when I was in college, and let's say it was nineteen seventy, which was, you know, fifty years ago now, right? Was, uh, the drug prices haven't gone down any. We've spent, I mean, you could still get an eight ball of cocaine for less than you could get it when I was in college, right? Or not, or after college, it was a few years after, I was living in Houston, so I was twenty-six. But the prices have not gone down, and we've spent billions of dollars on the war on drugs. And the war on drugs came out of Richard Nixon trying to figure out a way to put young people and blacks away, busting them for marijuana to get them where, cause they were protesting the war in Vietnam, and that's where all this started. So, it's important to understand the history of how this came about, in my opinion, and what I read and what I know from being there. And, you know, I resented a war on me in, in nineteen seventy, cause I was smoking marijuana. I resented that a lot, and it affected a lot of people. So, there's tens of thousands of people in prison, mainly of color and, and Latinos, that are in prison now because of the war on drugs, and the prices are still the same, or they're less. So, is it working? So, it's important for this to be working as well. Is, is it working? Is it worth our hundred thousand dollars a year? And, and so, when I, when I look at this, and, and so it's a conscious decision we make, and so, there's, coincidentally, there was two articles in the, in the paper this week. One of them was in the Post Independent, and it says, for instance, "National studies show about one in five American adults experience a mental illness annually approximately, forty-three point eight million people a year. According to federal government substance abuse and mental health services, young adulthood is a time when such disorders surface, with seventy, seventy-five percent of these health issues emerging by age twenty-four." So, what that tells me is the conscious decision at our level needs to be, was the war on drugs a failure? Yes, in my book. Are we continuing that war on drugs? Is it, is it still, is it working? Would we be better served with a hundred thousand dollar mental health professional with that money? Would we be better served with another school resource officer with that money? And so, you get over to the, the perspective in the Denver Post this week, and so it says here, "As a result of the Denver Police Department's new co-responder initiative, instead of a lone officer driving to the location to check out, a person who is believed to, who is mumbling to himself, walking around, talking loudly to himself and incoherently to himself, instead of driving to that location to check out that person, perhaps arrest him, a licensed mental health clinician accompanies the officer so a mental health diagnosis can be made on the spot. Then a joint decision is made, arrest in jail or mental health services." So, Denver, the Denver Police Department has now adopted this Office of Behavioral Health Strategies, and they have six people on payroll as mental health professionals to, to help with just such that issue. So, I won't, I won't, you know, so I, to me, that's important. I look at this more of a social issue than, than a criminal issue, and you know that, and we, we agree to disagree on that. But, but I want my board to know that we are making a conscious decision to commit a hundred thousand dollars to this. And so, all, what I ask is, that, you know, be realistic with what's happening, you know, do these things right. I mean, give us a real price, cause, you know, we shouldn't be spending a hundred thousand dollars to go seize a gram of pot or a gram, a gram of really anything, in my opinion. That, and we should be getting at least ounces or pounds of, of drugs off the street, as opposed to small amounts, and then, and then overestimating what that number is. So...
Well, I have, I have some comments.
I'm sure you do.
Um, a lot of times, a lot of times, the small amounts, I'll use that word, are in addition to larger amounts of different drugs, and they're seized as part of an operation. So, the gram of, gram of heroin, or a gram of coke, or whatever it is, they might be getting a pound of meth, and there's, there's coke and stuff along with it. So, that those smaller amounts, a lot of times, they're, um, that, those are part of an overall operation where there is a large quantity of drugs. They aren't going out and seizing a gram or otherwise unless they go out and do a controlled buy, when they do a controlled buy and they purchase the amount of drugs, and they take that, and the money walks when they're developing cases. So, those are, those are two, the two instances of when they do the war on drugs. If they're working a big case and they go in and do a search warrant, or they have reason to believe that there's drugs in there, and they give them permission to search, that there's usually a lot more drugs than just the little amount. In reference to the overinflating, and, you know, I can't, I can't even tell you what this stuff's worth myself, because I don't know, and I have to depend on them, but I can tell you that, um, you know, what it's worth in Colorado may not be what they're using for the price, which is what you're telling me, but, and the only thing I know is marijuana, cause I don't know what the prices are. The other thing is, that, that pound of marijuana is worth twelve hundred dollars in Colorado, and as soon as it crosses the Kansas line, it's worth fifty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, I don't know about that, but maybe.
So, you know.
If you sell it by the ounce, man.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what, you know, what prices they're using for that, what value.
Yeah.
But you're right, they should use what the value is in Colorado, not the value of what it may be out of state.
And, and yes, and, and, and we're gonna, and then Dan, I guess it's okay if we have a little bit of a...
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, you know, not debate, but, uh, interaction here, because Trident is supposed to be local. We're, we're trying to do this as a local...
Street level.
Huh?
Street level.
Street level, local, so, so to price it at anything other than what it is in Carbondale or Glenwood, or, i- i- is, it, to me, is misleading. Because, you know, when I was talking to Jay about this, one of his, one of his things, he says that, you know, that, that, you know, I said the, the national war on drugs has been an absolute failure, and then he said, "Well, but on the local level, that may or may not be true, because my understanding is a kid can go to Sopris Park and score a gram of meth on the weekend." Well, to me, you know, my answer to that would be, well, then, why don't we get another school resource officer, and why didn't he just, why don't the two of them just go out there and fi, and see that person, and, and, you know, seize the drug, put them into a program where, you know, "Hey, you've gotta get your act together, or you're gonna end up in prison," but move at it from, from that standpoint, as opposed to undercover. I, you know, I think undercover, and I'm sorry, and I'm probably in a total minority of one in, on this, but I think undercover operations, you know, create a lot of distrust between especially kids. And so, you know, if we're trying to get this early, and I, I assume we, we are, because none of us believe any, anybody should be doing any drugs, alcohol, tobacco are illegal drugs, when their brain is developing, right? We're all in agreement on that. But when you, when you, when you go out and people know you, you've got undercover people working there, I think it breeds some distrust with law enforcement. So, I think you gotta look at all of this, and, and what really works, and, and, you know, I, I just want us to keep evolving in this, and, and not, you know, be dinosaurish about it. If we, if we can find something else works, where we've got a mental health professional or a school resource officer, cause y'all have told me you'd like to have another school resource officer, and so if it comes down to sometime, you know, we've got a hundred thousand dollars, we need another school resource officer, what do you do? What decision do you make? I mean, that's gonna be y'all's decision, and I'm not advocating anything this year, certainly, but I, I think that we should look at these issues and be educated about them, and, and I think that, you know, I would greatly appreciate, you know, you and Chris, being realistic about what you're reporting to us, because, you know, e- even if you look at this, if you look at this, and the marijuana plants, indoor grow two hundred and forty-two plants, you know, and I, I, if I said, "What was the size of those plants?" And you'd say, "Well, I don't know." But, but, you know, if, if this is what you're reporting to us, I really think you should know what this is, because they value this at four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, that means they're getting, they're valuing it two, two pounds per plant, times two thousand dollars, I think. And, you know, it's, it's first place, it's hard to get to, unless the plant is fully matured and in flower, it's hard to get two pounds of flower off a plant, it's, it's probably closer to a pound and a half, max, if you've got it in a greenhouse with lights and all that. That's what my client's getting, about a pound and a half per plant. And, and so, let's just be real with people. Where we, where we've gone off base with kids since I was a kid, is we don't tell them the truth. And then, when we do tell them the truth, they don't believe you, cause you've been lying to them. And I think it's just really important that, that we tell, tell kids these days the truth on, on all this stuff.
Well, one of the other things, too, Frosty, just, one of the things, and I didn't notice it in the stats, but we did ask them to put it into pounds and ounces, um, a while back.
I know, I know, because she said you were gonna do that when we had that meeting, but here it is.
Yeah, well, I can't argue that, and so, I will make sure that, that we do that, and I'll work on the value.
Thank you.
And see, you know, because I don't, you know, I don't know, like, I don't know what a value of a...
Yeah, and I'm not sure either. I'm not out there other than seeing what's going on with my client. I don't know either. But, but anyhow, I just think it's, I think it's so important that you, that you're straight with kids, so they don't, so they trust you. I'm sorry, I'm through.
Heather's been very patient, yeah. Go for it.
I mean, for me, so Frosty, if we, if, if, if the focus continues to be on dollars and just the street value of a, of a particular amount of a drug, right, we leave out a lot of the other discussion. So, let's say you, you, you made this in half, and it was actually half a million dollars. Like, I don't mind that if it's super clear that it's like, street value of this drug. If then we use that, and I don't think this is what you're advocating, but, um, I, I think if you use that to strictly do this cost benefit analysis, um, I liken it to buying things from China. Part of what's happening is those are cheaper, because, you know, and we lack this discussion around the environmental impacts, because the struggle to put a dollar amount on the impacts on our air and our water quality and all these other things continues to sort of fall out of the equation, right? And so, it is just strictly this dollar for dollar, I make it here, it's this, I make it in the U.S., this, right? Cause there's no other, no one has placed dollar value on other things. So, um, I, I mean, I like where you're going in terms of making sure that we're very realistic, and it's local dollars and things like that, but I would never want the discussion to then solely rest upon that, because what are the social impacts of, of, I don't care if it's a gram of heroin? You know, what are the safety impacts of a gram of heroin? What are the, you know, environmental impacts of outdoor grows of two hundred and forty-two plants, or however many, right? Like, some of those can be pretty, um, serious impacts that, then, all of a sudden, if, if, if the discussion remains around those two things, uh, or just this dollar amount, um, you, you leave out some of the greater impacts. So, that's the only thing that I would argue in terms of being very cautionary about, um, I, I agree with getting the numbers accurate, but I am cautionary that then the discussion, you know, focuses around only the dollar amount of removing, you know, those from the streets. And then I think that there's so many different levels, like that, um, lowest level of, of, of interaction in kind of the war on drugs, um, what the Denver police are doing, it, it makes so much sense, you know, but if it came down to, you take a hundred thousand dollars, like, I, I just don't think there is this sort of all or nothing between the social and the enforcement side of, of the war on drugs. And I think that that's probably where so much of that war on drugs went wrong, is it swung all the way to the enforcement side. But I'm certainly a proponent of, of that kind of a combination of, of, um, you know, the social and mental health aspect, and, and the enforcement and the safety, because how you would interact with a young person, um, and, you know, their potential access to drugs is so very different than how you're going to, um, you know, bust a very large-scale, well-coordinated, well-oiled, um, you know, drug cartel kind of size, right? Such, two totally different things. And, you know, my concern is, is certainly, if, if any of that part is left behind, and there is more access, I mean, and we're seeing it right now with young people and more and more access to marijuana. Um, I don't believe it's a gateway drug, or any of the other things that they tried to sell us on, but I do think with more and more access to it, um, and some of the other drugs that are street drugs, it's a real issue. And the harder you make it, right, the more chance you have of intercepting at this very street level, right? Cause they're having to kind of work hard to figure it out, and ask around, and show up somewhere, and, you know, and then you get that chance to kind of interact. So, I really believe that those resources do need to, um, you know, tackle it at a lot of different points. And I think what's, you know, happened for many, many years, is that it's so many resources have stayed on the enforcement side, and, and haven't gone into this kind of multifaceted approach to, uh, you know, to, to, to kind of the entire education part, mental health, and removal of, of drugs from the streets and access to the drugs. So, that's just my two cents on, on the dollar. So, I, I guess I'm agreeing with you, but then, as a board, as we do move forward on some of those decisions, I certainly can never view it as a dollar for dollar approach to, to the impacts of, 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 you know, especially for us now, illegal drugs, right? And marijuana just ends up being this kind of anomaly in that discussion, because at some point, right, we, we don't have alcohol seized on, on here, so it's kind of like, "Hey, why is marijuana on here?" In, in a way. But, um, I gue, I guess we don't still have bootleggers making moonshine in the hills, but, I mean, maybe we do.
In North Louisiana.
Right. So, but, right, that's kind of like, I, I mean, for me, marijuana is very difficult, cause it's in its own kind of, um, like quasi-realm now, right? Between alcohol, many of these other lists of drugs, and then marijuana sort of sitting in the middle, but, so that's my two cents.
I think for me, there's kind of two threshold questions. First one's for the board, second one would be for Chris and Jean. Uh, first one, is the priority of this board to support children, or maybe to prioritize children? And that's how I look at this. Like, to me, clearly, my priority with Trident, when I think about it, is preventing drugs from getting in the hands of our children. I understand that, you know, that's not where enforcement stops, but for me, that's, that's where I would prioritize this, this investment. Um, and kind of regardless of that response, or, or that answer, is why and how is Trident a better enforce, a better enforcement option? Um, wait, sorry. Why is how, why and how is Trident a better, uh, option than investing in social and mental, a, a social and mental health options, such as a, um, school resource officer or other resources? To me, that's the threshold question. Is this the best way to spend our money if our priority is X? And so, to me, I think that's, that's what I would like to accomplish tonight, is what is our priority with this investment? Um, and my sense is tonight, we probably aren't gonna pull out of Trident, and that wouldn't be an option to do immediately anyway, but we can provide guidance as to what our priority is. So, I guess I, I'll first throw that question out. Is, is it really children, or is it really just drugs in general, um, that we're willing to invest in Trident right now? Any thoughts on that?
Well, I mean, it's tough when you pose the question. It sounds like an either or, and that's where I was saying, it, it could never be, for me, it could never be an either or. I'm not gonna take a hundred thousand dollars out of Trident and put it, you know, to a school resource officer. I, I would not be in support of that, because I think that the trickle-down effect of, of, of just the supply of drugs on the street, you know, has that impact. Unfortunately, drugs target existing addicts, who are a clear demand in the demand-supply chain, and then youth, because they can be a very quick source of easy conversion, easy addiction, and, and, and there you move forward. So, I mean, it, it would never be an either or for me, if I said maybe mental health resources or that kind of, kind of intervention, then, then, and we had limited resources, then I would like to see those prioritize youth. Yes.
And one of the things that I'll, I totally agree on is that, not only in drugs, but everywhere, we have a great need for mental health resources in this valley. And finding some way to fund that, and I think it needs to be more than at the local level, would be great. You know, you brought up, they have six officers in Denver that, there are six people that are mental health professionals that are allowed, on those types of calls. And it would be great if we had a person like that, but they don't work twenty-four seven, and, you know, the funding probably isn't gonna help us that much for the type of calls that we do the training. But, you know, I think Colorado, and this stat is probably not accurate anymore, is like forty-third in, out of the fifty states in funding mental health services. And mental health services, as Chris can tell you more than I, is, is very, I don't know what word I wanna use.
It's lacking.
Lacking in this valley, even though we have people and agencies that say we have it, when we need those, we don't, we don't have that access that we need to have to it. We send our officers to training to deal with people just like the ones Frosty was talking about, because we found that's a better bang for our buck, is to send the people to training to try and deal with those people, versus trying to have mental health professionals that are available to us.
You know, the same way we pool our resources for Trident, though, I mean, if, if there was valley-wide pooling of resources, where you, we essentially had, you know, eleven jurisdictions that pooled resources for mental health officers, mental health, not necessarily officers, but, you know, mental health resources that were on call and were available. Um, I, I mean, I think that, that, that's to my support of Trident, is its, its efficiency and effectiveness is only there because of the pooling of resources, right? I think it's tough for us to, you know, continue to take all of it on, like, for a lot of reasons, right? You, we, you may have people that move from one area to another and are struggling. They, they stay in Aspen for a while, then they might come here, you, you know? Again, our school district crosses how many jurisdictions? So, I think it's also tough to, you know, continue to look to the, the same way. If we tried to build all of the drug enforcement within our existing police force, you know, I think its effectiveness would go way down. Same with the mental health resources. I think they have to be pooled in a way where they're more effective, both for us, from a monetary perspective, and then just socially. We, we don't, our, our boundaries just don't stop anymore at Carbondale. They, they, it then immediately goes into Garfield County and all these other places. So, that's the other thing that it strikes me, is we come up with solutions to, you know, figure out how some of that, um, pooling of resources and kind of cross-jurisdictional can work, even if it's with mental health resources. I think would be huge.
Go ahead, Frosty.
And, you know, and, and I, I would agree with that, Heather, is, is that, you know, this would be something like, Jean, I'd like you to do. I mean, ask Lou. You know, here, here's the feedback I got from our board, you know, was, is there a way we can do the same thing we do with Trident with mental health resources in our valley? Can we do that? How, can we lead there? Can let, let's, let's lead that. Let's say, hey, this, you know, I know Jay told me that y'all have had just a couple of things recently, where it took a lot of time, and the deal, the person was clearly mentally, having mental issues, and, and, but it takes so long to deal with, and takes the officer off the street, and there's no place, you know, so, and I know Katrina's brought this up before, and, and, yeah, so I, I think there's gotta be a way to do this, and, and I think this is the tough decision that, that's gonna, you know, at some point, it's gonna have to be made, and maybe, maybe it splits somehow. Maybe half goes to Trident, half goes to a new mental health, uh, uh, you know, policing, where we have some mental health professionals that can help the, the police when they go out. And, um, and so, um, you know, and, and the pricing, just to answer you, I'm not looking for a cost-dollar analysis. The reason, the main reason I brought that up was because we had this discussion last time, and they agreed to do it, and now it's, it's... time, and they agreed to do it, and now it's reverted back to the old school of listing 50 kilograms. And I think, unfortunately, I think there's a lot of people in the public who think, oh my gosh, they're just taking all kinds of drugs off the street. Well, it's really not. It's 127 pounds of marijuana, and that's, you know, I think that's what I'll say, 127 pounds. I mean, I just think it's more simplistic.
Sure.
Is it fair to say, I mean, because I think we're sort of saying the same thing, that we understand that there are criminal and mental health impacts of drugs across the whole population, both the youth and adults. We're trying to assess where to put our funds so that that's the right balance and why? Why should we invest more in Trident, or why should we invest more in mental health? And right now, I would agree that the numbers don't really mean that much to me, and I don't know whether or not it's having a more positive effect for me on youth than investing in mental health. So to me, that kind of seems like, what's the balance between criminal and mental health investment and why? And I think that's a community discussion. It's not like you're going to come back with an answer, you know, a definitive answer. But I kind of feel like that's where we are, but chime in if I'm not capturing that correctly.
I'll chime in. I apologize for being late. I just got out of work, but I was hoping to be here as part of this discussion because it is the third time I've had it now, in addition to discussions that I've had with the officers. And, you know, Frosty's right, what I have brought forward before that I think is an opinion shared by our police department is that fundamentally, we're dealing with a mental health problem in drug addiction and some of the related behaviors and that. You know, there's limited tools for that, limited tools in our community, limited tools in Garfield County, and, you know, we're under, we're still operating under the war on drugs, whether it's working or not, and we have limited tools under those. I sort of philosophically am, I don't like some of Trident's tactics, and I don't, have not always been a fan of the organization, but the reason I felt like it was really important for me to run here and catch the last few minutes of the meeting was because I think it's a really important safety for our officers. You know, if our police officers have to go up against someone who is a meth dealer with AK-47s, real-life scenario in our community, they don't have the tools necessary. You know, we have this sort of like, I don't know if bare bones is the right word, but we have a very small force, especially compared, I mean, I actually don't know how it compares to other ratios of police force to population, but, you know, I mean, I just know that dividing hours by days by the number of police officers, that we are not, you know, that we don't have a bunch of extra police officers for backup. And so to me, what Trident really represents is the backup that our police force needs, you know, the surveillance stuff, and, you know, I mean, they have all the equipment, but I think that's such an important piece, too, is their ability to build evidence when it's needed. And I, there are very serious criminals in our community. There, we are impacted by Mexican drug cartels. There are deadly drugs reaching very, very young people in our community, as we went over in our discussion about the information that came out of the social norming research that, you know, 17 or 27, something like that, of these young people had done crystal meth. And that's, you know, very, very young people. So I just wanted to share that piece, that I do think as a whole, there's a huge shortfall of mental health resources. And I really commend this board and previous boards for using some of our marijuana resources for mental health services in our community. And I think more and more of that is, you know, more is good of all of that stuff. But I just wanted to say that I'm certainly supportive of really whatever the ask. I mean, last night, I was looking out my window, and the ice was like blowing sideways, it was the worst imaginable weather, and our police officers were out driving around. And, you know, they're, as I said before, our first line of defense, and I really would like to support them in whatever way they need to do their best job for our community.
Thank you.
Could I share something?
Absolutely.
I started for Carbondale in 1995, and about two years into serving at night, we got a call of an overdose. And when my partner and I arrived, it was actually in one of the trailer parks in town. There was a young man, he was probably 27 to 29 years old, not breathing, not conscious. And his wife had called us, and his two little girls were in the hallway, and it was a trailer, so there wasn't any room, and we had to get him in a place where we could give him CPR. I just want to kind of share with you how I was impacted early in my career. He never came back. He died, and his two little tiny girls were standing in the hallway, and that was the biggest impact on me, was they were watching me give their daddy CPR. When the ambulance came, they hauled into Valley View, and I asked, well, where is it? And his wife brought out the plate of cocaine. And the amount of it was considerable, but it wasn't, the amount of it had nothing to do, it was, you know, what the whole situation created for the family, for the little girls. And I would just hate, yes, we need mental health more than anything, as far as expenses are concerned. I would hate to think that we also did not address the drugs themselves, because we get to see both sides of it, and we see the impacts of what drugs do to people, to families, to kids, to parents. It's really, really compelling material to watch. I know who provided that cocaine, and that person never went to jail or prison. I didn't have enough evidence. And I occasionally see that person. That has an impact on me. I believe that you're right, it should be balanced, but $90,000 to $95,000, I don't know what kind of big impact that's going to have. Right now, the nation's been, officers across the nation have been going through CIT training, which is critical incident training. And I want one of my officers to have it eventually, and it deals with how do you interact with mentally unstable folks so that you can get the desired outcome for them, get them attached to the resources they need? I believe in that 110%, but I truly believe that we also have to make it difficult for people to deal drugs, because I just don't want it out in the open. I don't want people to feel like it's okay. I know there are environments where that is okay. I don't want that to be Carbondale.
There's something else, I think, as we talk about drugs, addiction, mental health issues in our community, treatment's a large part of our local economy. And Frosty, I've had this discussion before, Jean and I, you know, we deal with some of the issues of people who fall out of treatment, who go off the wagon, and I don't know if we have a higher concentration because of the treatment, but it seems to be a recurring issue as we deal with some of the folks who are in recovery or stages of recovery who then fall out of it. And it seems to be a pretty common thing that the police department deals with. We deal with it at staff level, because in some of our departments, we lose staff on a, more seasonal staff on a somewhat regular basis, on folks that we've hired, invested in, and then they end up moving on because of falling out of the recovery stage. Had that happened last week with a pretty good staff member. So I don't know how that all plays in, but it just seems in Carbondale that the discussion comes up a lot more because it's a big part of our, you know, both the treatment and recovery is a big part of our local economy.
Yeah.
Heather?
I mean, I think if we're moving in that direction, and there would even be the discussion of sort of separating our actual, like, dollar resources, you know, I'd also love to, like, hear more from, I think this is putting a lot of burden on the enforcement agency, right, to then come and be giving more advice on the mental health side of it. The whole point of that is a partnership. So I'd really love to then, we start hearing more from the mental health resource side of things, even inviting somebody, you know, from the front range that could come and talk to us a little bit more. I mean, really digging into, you know, what it would look like to have the most effective use of dollars in that side of the equation, right? And it's not taking away from you guys, right, but like, your part of what you've been looking at, and I believe firmly it should remain there, is on the enforcement side and working with Trident and removal, and then seamlessly figuring out how to work with the other side, which is the mental resources side, intervention, and putting people in the right places to get them in contact with the right treatment that if they can do it, they can stay with. But, like, I'd love to then, we continue to hear from just broader individuals that help us with, I think really what would be very innovative models for small communities, to be perfectly honest. I mean, you know, if Trident then started to have this same model, but in a very small community way, it'd be an amazing precedent for small rural communities. So, you know, and I totally support it, but I think we should continue to hear from more people about what that would really look like, at least in my perspective. I had one other question about, back to like the focus on youth. In some of these statistics, can we see maybe where, how much of this contact fits into demographics? So some of like your arrests, cases, dispositions, is there any way to actually break some of that down of, like, even if it's just how many of those arrests or contacts by Trident are maybe individuals under the age of 25? Or, I don't know, I mean, maybe some statistics that we set, but would that be possible? Okay. Because that'd be interesting, right? I mean, to see a little bit where the demographics fall, and do we have particular areas of concern? Are we seeing, you know, greater impacts in a much younger demographic? Or, you know, does this all fall sort of in the, hey, it's over 40-year-olds that are having the most mental health issues or things like that? Would certainly help, maybe if we start to have the discussion about focusing on younger individuals.
Ben?
So I have two questions, and one you guys can answer, I'm sure, and the other is related to that, but is a broader question that we probably won't have conclusive evidence on, but I think is worth thinking about. So the first question is, how do the communities in our Three River Valley area, as defined by Trident, who aren't members of Trident, handle these drug cases? And so that's kind of the question of if we weren't a member, what would that look like? And related to that is just a more general question of, does the enforcement, and this is the one I don't think we can answer tonight, but I think it's really important that we think about it, does this kind of enforcement actually reduce the number of people using drugs? Like, I think, I agree with Chris, you don't want it to be out in the open. We at least kind of bury it a little bit, and it's behind closed doors, and there's this agreement in the community that this isn't okay, and you don't do it out in the open. But I'm sure, I mean, I've Googled around a bit, but I'm sure countless studies have been done on, you know, communities that have higher and lower levels of drug-related enforcement, and whether they have, you know, correlating higher and lower levels of drug use, because the, you know, things that I've read about that over the years, or that, as Frosty kind of started off the evening with, is that the total availability and rates of use have remained pretty steady despite trillions of dollars and decades of efforts to reduce it. So we all totally agree and are, that we want to reduce drug use, and are touched and saddened by stories like Chris shared. But I think the question is, if we had been a member of Trident then, would that man have been any less able to get the drug that he wanted, you know? And I don't know that the answer is yes. I really don't. So back to my first question is, if we weren't in Trident, so clarify for us who's in Trident. I see the arrests by city in each of these, and are those the members Glenwood Rifle, Carbondale, Newcastle, Parachute, Silt Vale?
No.
Okay.
The members are Carbondale, Silt, Lowell Springs Rifle, and the Garfield County Sheriff's Department.
So then my question is, are we seeing, A, what happens in Basalt and Newcastle when there's drug trafficking going on that the police find out about somehow? And B, you know, are they experiencing higher rates of this stuff happening? You know, I don't expect you to have the data on that right now, but I think that that's a pretty essential question. Like, we're kind of assuming that putting more enforcement toward this reduces it, and I don't know that that's a safe assumption.
Well, and I don't know if it necessarily reduces the amount of drugs or the drug usage, but a lot of what it reduces is the other ancillary stuff, property crimes, weapons offenses, some of those other things outside that aren't necessarily the drugs itself. People that are on the drugs, you know, a lot of them have to pay for it. And we see a lot of our, you know, car thefts, car break-ins. We've seen over the years where those things, when Trident can come in and get rid of a group of people that are doing that, our property crimes drop. So I think more in the ancillary it is than in the actual drug use going down. These are, because it doesn't cross jurisdictional boundary, it does cross jurisdictional boundaries. You see arrests in all those cities. Basalt, I don't believe that, and I don't know about Newcastle, but Basalt, if they had to do a drug investigation, and it was in Eagle County, part of it, they'd probably call in the Eagle County Task Force. In Pickton County, I don't know what they'd do. If it's what I would consider a lot less, a lot lower crime, they'd do probably what we do, and not call Trident, but do a knock-and-talk at the door, or have Trident do a knock-and-talk at the door, where we don't have a lot of evidence, but we see people go into houses and a concerned neighbor, or the officers observe this, and they call and say, hey, you know, we don't have anything, can you guys look into it? Those are the kind of things I think that we do. But if it's higher up, if it goes into the organizational, even though it's a street level, then that's where Trident has a lot more expertise than we do.
So if we contribute $90,000 to Trident every year, would we have anybody to call to help us with those kinds of, like, does Newcastle have anybody to call, or are they just totally on their own?
They can call, but if you aren't a member, you don't have as much of a priority of getting Trident to respond to those cases, if they're involved in other cases.
And the kind of situation that Katrina described, where we would all agree that we want our law enforcement to have the more kind of, you know, I don't know, specialized backup for a drug dealer with assault weapons and that kind of situation, I mean, A, does that happen? Like, do we get those kinds of situations? And if so, then if we weren't a member of Trident, what would we do in those situations? And what do those other communities do in those situations now?
All-hazard response team, when there's a problem with weapons and things like that, is what we use, when we have the kid with the gun over there on Wilmer Bar.
So with or without Trident, we'd have access to that kind of tactical, high-caliber support?
We would.
Okay. That's just good to know, as we try to piece this together and think, if we walked away from- from it, where would we end up and what would we be lacking? And I think one of the most compelling arguments for staying in it is what you said in the memo and what we've talked about before, about just the amount of time and resources and the fact that we don't even have a dedicated detective right on the force right now. So that those kinds of resources, it could tie up our street patrol officers and pull them away from their core duties if they had to pursue these. But I wonder how much that happens. I mean, it's, you know, some of these are like two in Carbondale in the whole year. So to what degree that's...
But the other part of it is that they cross the jurisdictional boundary. So just because you have two in Carbondale doesn't mean that that's all that was going on in Carbondale.
I mean, that's my thing. If Trident's focused in terms of like actual contact and arrest, you know, if places like Rifle or those areas are more of a conduit for larger scale groups of people coming in and breaking apart into a supply chain, right, and the arrests are there and there's fewer in Carbondale, like, in some respects, that's a good thing. And our contact in Carbondale can be much more about our local police force and existing resource officers or new, if we add that. But, I mean, I think if Trident's arrests start to be more and more in Carbondale, like, in some respects, that's not a good thing, because we do know sometimes where the drugs are coming through. Or the Big Grow operation got busted, right? I mean, it's not necessarily here. So again, I don't know that it like correlates to the impacts if you think about just where it's supplied from, how it breaks apart, and then how it gets into kind of a final, like, user's hands, I guess. It'd be hard to say that it's particular jurisdictions.
And one of the things to remember, in regional organization like Trident, everyone's not actually participating at the same level. So Silt's not going to have the resources to assign an officer to it, so they're going to put other resources towards it. We don't pay into the analyst position, and so the county picks up part of our tab for being part of Trident by paying for the analyst, which we don't, which is a bone of contention with the sheriff. He would freely voice his opinion on us not participating at that level. So not, I mean, the folks kind of participate in what their needs are. Not everyone's playing exactly the same. Isn't that how you'd describe it, Jean?
And the sheriff department also has two officers assigned there. You know, we have one, Glenwood has one, Rifle has one, plus they have the analysts, too, which you have, Jean just answered. It is a different person participation.
Jean and Chris, I have a quick question, or maybe it's not a quick question, but kind of to Frosty and Heather's point earlier, I wouldn't prioritize Trident's time on, you know, breaking the corner dealer of marijuana, but I do see, I understand the point that a lot of times you're seizing, or Trident is seizing other drugs and marijuana just happens to be there, so we see it. I also get that if there's large grow operations like we've read about, that that's worthy of Trident's time. But would you say that Trident focuses its efforts appropriately on the heavier drugs and not marijuana?
Yes.
Yeah.
I would say that.
Okay.
And I think that's a direction from the board, is that that's the highest priority, is the hard drugs. Marijuana is the worst priority. If, you know, they have big rows, people report them, then they'll assist the agencies with those.
Okay. Katrina, you had your hand up.
I feel like I remember you talking, maybe it was you, Chris, us talking about how long we've been a part of Trident and that in between somewhere, we took a year off and sort of found some things during that year.
About it in the memo. At a certain point, the mission of going after street-level drug dealers was a little bit lost, and so, yeah.
Yeah, it's that, what you pointed to about that sort of shortfall of just...
And that's when we discovered, because we had to do our own work, how tremendous it was, really. Jean has detailed a lot of hours in surveillance vehicles.
Yeah, I mean, to me, that's just such an important piece, especially when we've had so much discussion about community safety and increasing patrols, like, you know, I think it really does help keep our people on the streets, kind of doing that work that's so critical for the community. So that's how I can see, you know, I kind of, I kind of see it. I mean, I feel the same concern. I think, you know, the goal, fewer people doing drugs is a good goal, but there's other goals too that are the community safety goals and, you know, the sort of atmosphere our community creates. We do have a continuous supply of people who are addicted to drugs and alcohol coming into our community and sort of finding their path, and sometimes that works out really well, and when it doesn't work out well, it's, you know, really bad. And I, you know, I think the statistics are helpful for what actually happens, but there's just a lot of stuff that is happening under the surface, I think, in our community. I mean, I went last year to the police because, you know, a teenager told me that there was somebody at Sopris Park who was dealing drugs to young girls, telling them that it was whatever drug they were looking for, and the drug that they were selling was bath salts. So it's just this extremely kind of like terrifying scenario that, you know, without like additional resources to look into this person, see if they're, you know, that person does have, you know, is known to this organization. And at different times there, you know, I've gone to Jean and said, I'm really concerned, I'm hearing some really scary things about this person. Lo and behold, they are known to Trident, and there is, you know, there is a part of it. So I just think that's so important too, outside of the final statistics, that it's like what you're saying, that idea that it's not, you know, it's not like condoned, that there is, there is resistance to it as a, you know, heavy drug culture. And, I mean, I really see it as a problem, and I think it's increasing, and I, you know, so I would hate to pull away the kind of, what I think is the strongest deterrent, you know? And, but I think also, I would love to reiterate what Heather said, that I think a discussion from maybe some mental health experts, kind of what, how we had the housing people come in, you know, some people that are like, this, this is what really works in communities, and these communities that are doing better with this or trying these things, I think that's a great idea.
So Frosty, just one minute, but we're at about an hour, and I think what I'm hearing, just as I suspected, I don't think we're moving in the direction of pulling out of Trident, but I think in the remaining minutes, if we could provide any guidance, so there's what we want to discuss in the future, but it's also, what kind of priorities would we ask the Trident Board to consider would be good feedback in the final minutes? But Frosty, go for it.
Oh, I was just going to say, you know, with, on Katrina's issue about somebody in the park dealing drugs, I mean, I don't know, I mean, if we've only got a limited amount of money, to me, that's the discussion, and could a school resource officer do the same thing? And should we be, if these issues are happening, if we could, if we can get kids so they don't go into the, to their 25, 30-year age, if we can get them younger where they don't try drugs and we can intervene at that point in time, I just think that that's going to be a better war effort than what we've been doing. So, and I think this has been a very good discussion for everybody to hear, and that's what I wanted to do, I wanted to have that discussion. And I, you know, we've got limited funds, so, and, you know, the money's not, you know, just, it's not a bang for the buck per se, it's just, the bang for the buck is, does a school resource officer help us more? Does a mental professional help us more? Is it a combination thereof with Trident or what? And then that's a decision y'all are going to continue to face over the next several years, as y'all continue to learn and govern and be a part of this. And that's my point.
I think to that end, I mean, I certainly agree, and I had no intentions of suggesting we pull out of Trident, because I understand the value of enforcement and the need for it. But by continuing to provide this officer, if we don't have additional funding for the mental health, then what we're saying is, this is the best bang for the buck. And I'm not so sure I'm there in the long term. I'd like to think that there are ways to find additional resources for mental health so we can find that balance between the criminal activity and the mental health needs. But I heard that a lot this year, the needs for mental health, and there may come a point where we have to really evaluate, you know, just like Frosty says, is this really the best use of funds? And it's probably going to be yes for the foreseeable future, but I think that's, I think for me to feel, continue to feel comfortable about it, I think the reporting almost needs to be more like your story, Chris. Like, I think you made the point that that enforcement is necessary. By us just looking at numbers of what drugs are being seized, it's really hard for me to put value on, you know, what the work Trident's doing.
You know, during that period that we had, our own cases, had a lot of people, generated a lot of relationships with folks, and some of them were family members, saying, my mother, my brother is doing this, help me stop it. It would, you know, and I get it, a lot of people don't steer clear from that life, but some of them do, because they hit bottom. And, you know, ideally, for anybody to be able to go to a rehab, that would be awesome. But some folks turn their lives around because they get, they get popped, and the judge mandates that they get treatment, that they have P tests, that they're on probation. That's not ideal, but it does work for some folks. I've seen them, they've thanked me, it happens. But I would love for us to have a place where I could send somebody who I truly know needs to be in a place that's safe for them because of mental illness. And yeah, I think it happens hand in hand a lot of times, the same folks having both But like, for instance, a week ago, I was dealing with somebody, and there were no beds available in Grand Junction, and that was the closest place, but there were no beds available for that person who really needed it, you know? So, yeah, there's a disparity, but there is value.
Oh, clearly.
You know what I mean? I can see it, I can really see it, and I can talk to people who are there. So, yeah, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is, I wish I knew. And we deal with a lot more mental health issues that are related to drugs.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
If we can figure mental health out, that's a big thing.
I mean, to me, it's really difficult, because I can't give you the clear direction, because I don't know what that is, but, you know, you say, Chris, that there's clear value because you know that, and probably by you saying that, you're pulling yourself above these statistics and you're looking at the trends, the 20, 30 years that you've seen. And to me, that's what we're not seeing in these reports, is what are the trends? You know, is it, is it working and why? And we know there's not going to be metrics and statistics to necessarily support that, but it's some narrative to...
Well, and you see families, you see that families breaking up marriages, breaking up businesses, going under, we actually see that happening, and we know why it's happening.
Katrina?
I just wanted to share that I have talked about this issue, sort of offline of the issue of the lack of what I feel are mental health services in Carbondale, and where we do have Garfield County Health and Human Services, you mostly have to go to Glenwood and/or Rifle, and how we're kind of on this far end of the county where we don't have a Health and Human Services, you know, resource. And so I think part of the conversation really isn't like, do we fund Trident, or do we fund mental health services? But that, you know, on a county and state level, we're actually also asking for our fair share of mental health services, you know? Because it's easy to feel like there's a provision, but when the provision is in Grand Junction, and it's not enough, you know, we don't really, with these limited funds, what is needed, I don't think we necessarily could meet that. But I think, you know, asking for the attention our community deserves from the resources that there are, I mean, we really are entitled to these Garfield County Human Service funds, and those are directly from the state. And so, and that was the feedback that I got in conversations with county commissioners about the issue too, was that, you know, it's a larger issue and other funding is available. So rather than it being an either or, you know, and maybe there is some combination and whether, if in the future we participate at a lower tier, you know, I think that's important. And then also, you know, potentially in the conversation, looking at what resources there are, you know, I know two different people who, the local nonprofit, Away Out, has put through rehab. And, you know, so there are some public and private resources that maybe like, that the clearinghouse of knowing what all those resources are and how they can come together to sort of help the people in our community. So it's not just one officer and a mental, dealing with a person with a mental health problem, but that there's a, you know, sort of matrix to get them plugged into those resources that are there, you know? Because that's a, that's even, I think, an additional job than what staff has, you know, in their capacity, so.
Is there support to have a discussion on mental health in the future at a work session?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Any final guidance to Chris and Jean about Trident that we haven't already covered? Any parting thoughts from either of you?
I think, I think that when we did, started doing quarterlies a year after we had that discussion, I think it was, not for dollars, but for weights, I think it was in pounds and ounces. And I think that it went back because I wasn't diligent enough to make sure it was right.
Dang that legal area.
Just keep slipping back into grams.
You know, when we had that conversation, I was really, I really said, this is the way we need to do it, because I don't know the grams, the pounds, you know, so.
As far as any direction, I would assume that you're going to relay this conversation to that board?
Yes.
And that we're going to continue to evaluate the utility of this, you know, membership, and that we're going to look at it just the way that everybody said, is this the best use of this funding to address critical issues in our community about the health and safety of our people? And so for now, we funded it for this year, and we're not pulling out, but we're concerned about these other issues, and we want to make sure that this is supporting our police officers in a way that you guys can focus on those other issues, sounds like a big part of it, and focusing on those hard drugs.
And I have a Trident meeting next Thursday, so I will...
Yeah.
That's an interesting...
I'm not coming in and talking.
You're the guest speaker. We signed you.
Stay out of there.
Thank you for listening to us. I welcome any of you. I can share stories, I'd love to share stories of what I've seen, and a lot of our guys can too. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thanks for all you do.
Hey, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks.